Staff needs to get more information for us. Um, I just wanna say one thing about naming. My understanding from the last meeting is that the name has to be English and easy to pronounce. So that safety can navigate where they need to go. Is that correct, Chris? Or Chief Downey?
Counselor, this is Chris. Uh, so the, the parameters of choosing the names, uh, don't specifically, we're not saying that, that the names need to be English or have to be English. Um, the, uh, recommendations and the parameters were that they, the names aren't duplicates, that they don't have possible multiple spellings. And that they're, um, not difficult to pronounce, which I know based on our prior dialogue was, uh, you know, rightly pointed out that that is, you know, in, uh, towards more English terms to use, um, and the pre-fruit listed.
So may I ask Chris? Chris, may I just ask, who would have trouble pronouncing names? Who is it that would have trouble pronouncing the names?
So in, in an emergency situation, it could be the caller, uh, that would have an issue with pronouncing a name, um, or it could also be the receiver, uh, the dispatcher that is not hearing the name correctly, um, so, um, you know, that, that's the general concern is that it, it could be on both ends, that the name is difficult to understand because of the pronunciation, so, uh, that's where, you know, that parameter comes from, um, in terms of, of the overall process of choosing names.
So if they reflect names that are commonly pronounced by most people, those would be more acceptable than names that are not used by most people. And I, I bring this to you, this question, because when you go out there to go get input about names, be clear about what kind of names people can choose. Because what I'm hearing right now is that we have a lot of parameters to make sure we choose names that can drive the fire department to the correct home in an alley. So I'm just asking you to be clear, when you go out in public and you ask them about the names, are you gonna present the names that we have? Or are you gonna truly ask for their input on what kind of names they would like to have? And, and I don't know, I've never been in a city where I've been able to choose the name of my street, so I don't have that experience. But I'm curious about, um, I'm curious about the process of how this would get done. I'm concerned, um, about it as an equity issue. Um, it's a lot larger than what we can resolve here tonight, but I'm just bringing that up, because it is an issue.
Counselor, if I could just reply to that, I, I just wanna clarify, um, well, or ask the council to clarify when you come up with a final recommendation or decision. Um, as of now, our intention would not be to go out and, and ask, uh, residents to, to choose names. I just, our strong recommendation on that would be that we don't do that because there's no way we would get consensus and, um, it would be complicated and that's why we don't do it. I mean, we, we don't, uh, and most cities don't allow that, right? It's just, it's given a name or number, um, this is just unique because we have tons that we haven't been named before, so doing it all at once, but it would be, it would be a very difficult challenge, uh, to, to go out and, and ask feedback about people naming what they prefer for the alley, so.
Counselor Nacho Gao or Van Beveren or Pace? Okay, okay, after. Can you hear me? Did I get myself on mute then? Yes. Okay, cool. Um, I agree with Counselor Cal, I've never been in a city where I picked a name for, for the street I live on. And I think that, uh, uh, that's a very interesting situation and I, I, I can see exactly what Robbie's saying. We're never gonna get consensus if they're gonna be able to visit on the naming situation. It's gonna be virtually impossible to get some, to agree on a consensus. And I understand sort of the, the nature of the problem concerning what kinds of names you choose, but it's easy, you wouldn't wanna have my name on the street. You know, they don't figure out where I want to talk to call, how do you spell it? And so I think, you know, that, that there's part of this need to be cognizant of the fact that there are some parameters that are gonna happen, but in fact, having to do with understandably and, and being able to communicate, I mean, just, it's a safety issue. I would basically be, frankly, I'd be opposed to sending it back for any kind of name situation, I just, names are names, uh, you know, these are, these are, uh, from my perspective at least, a way to locate a particular first place on the map, it's almost like, uh, longitude and latitude coordinates, so, you know, it is what it is. I just have hard time getting all excited about the names. If that's gonna be done, certainly wouldn't do it on a whole project. Um, maybe perhaps the five alleys that we've been talking about. I don't have a whole lot of trouble, frankly, if you're gonna pull the five alleys up, then we work those in some fashion. But overall, you know, I, I really have heart to name the names. Um, I do agree, uh, with, uh, very much with Counselor Martin that there, there needs to be a logical approach to how we address this. It sounds like that's a second step. My concern is that, uh, in that, in that overall situation is that once we agree on a name, we're gonna be, the city council will lose control of what's gonna happen next. Because that's gonna be a mystery. And I have far more, uh, the full big picture. First of all, I'm on your record, I didn't expect it to form to get this big. But second of all, I have far more issue with the addressing than I do with the name. The addressing issue to me particularly with regard to houses that don't have entrances that face the alley. I have trouble with that. You know, I just do, that to me is, that's an issue. And if we approve this now, then we, the city council will lose control of that future. So, uh, I would be inclined, uh, to kind of melding this whole thing together, take out the five alleys that have already been hit once, if you will, houses that have already been hit once. Take out the ones that are fall brick now that face the alley, only have Rogers that fit on the alley. Rename everything else according to the proposal. Look at those related to date. Once we figure out what may be conjunction with the administration, what to do with the, with the path to success.
Fred, can I ask a quick, my question about that?
Sure, sure.
So your thorough thought process about picking the alleys that are near the relays or near the Autumn Creek stuff, like your thorough thought process of taking those out is basically, if they're not named, they can't be administratively addressed differently, and that's your concern, right?
Exactly, we've got, you know, one step's gonna lead to another of this thing, and once they're renamed, then, uh, you know, the addressing issue comes to the fore, I mean, uh, I would really rather, I realize that's administrative, but at the end of the day, administration works for us. And I would really rather get the discussion that upfront and an understanding of what's gonna happen first, before we put a name on it or open to the administration.
I, I think that was really my question, uh, if, if we made, so if we as a council decide to agree, that we make it clear that we don't want the, you know, the garage be named, i- if we make that clear, does it matter if the alley is named or not to you still, or is that the point at which you're saying the administrat- the, the fact that we would push this over to the administrative side is the part that you just don't wanna do? Is that, like, I'm just trying to get a clarification about, like, where that?
Right, before it goes over to the administrative side, side, I'd like to have a good direction about what's gonna happen with the address.
Okay, thank you.
And just for those particular houses, you mean, you know, uh, Humphrey's house should have an address, whatever that alley's gonna be, Fifth Street intersection, wherever you wanna call it. That, that should be addressed on that alley, and that should show up someplace where we can find, uh, in case of emergency, um, the other one, you know, I wanna chat about whether or not you had to put an address logical just in front. To me, that kind of applies a lot, but, I, I, maybe I missed one point, so, yeah.
Counselor Martin, to answer your question, uh, yes, if the council is not moving forward with address changes, the alley naming aspect is very, very important for fires themselves, so that's still a very important part of our, our jobs, when we're having to work in alleys and, and where we're at.
Can I, can I ask a very quick question here? Um, if, if, I, I, I'm thinking about Fred's comment, and I'm wondering, does the alley, uh, name assigned to the alleys that don't have one, does that imply you address automatically? I, I don't think, I, I don't think that's right, is it?
Uh, Counselor Van Beveren, you're correct. Just naming the alley does not imply an automatic address change.
Okay, I just want that to be clear before we go forward, because I do have some of the same concerns that Fred has, but, um, uh, and I'll just throw in that I, I, for historical districts, or perhaps HOAs, like, um, that have thematic naming, I would, I would ask that the city consider renaming those, not soliciting input, but naming them in accordance with the thematic, historic names that are prevalent in that area, should the HOA or significant number of residents want that. Uh, I would not invest that with, with public myself. Um, and I like the hit and greet, um, out, and I like the front door being the address, uh, and some of the other things that, uh, Counselor Martin said for instance, like, uh, we're compelling, uh, so that's, that's kind of where I am at, is trying to look for consensus. Counselor Pace?
Hey, okay, thank you, sir. Um, I, I'm kind of on board with what you said, Rick, uh, and to Counselor Martin's proposal of starting over and, and re, and not, not, not taking any, recall all the names, I, I think that is unwise. Uh, we have a stopgap, and that's exactly what that is, stopgap fail, right? So you have the actual system plus the stopgap, so then you have two systems working right now, when fire and police are trying to get to a location. I don't wanna take any more chances. Miss Humphrey, Humphrey's father died over a year ago, right? Let's go, right? Let's do this on the names that are good, right? And, and as far as the, the other two options, we can pull those out and, and Stonewater keep the address. And I'll call it out, I, I'm not sure if this is what you're going for, Counselor Alcare, but there is some serious white privilege going on right now, when people are saying they wanna name their own name street, right? So I like Counselor Van Beveren's idea of taking into account area, historical area, um, but not necessarily, you know, having the public, you know, just trying to do the best we can, but in line with, with the historical area, so, that's what I have. Uh, do you mind if I, so I, I get your, I get your logic, uh, each about wanting to kind of identify, but put, basically solve all the, solve the easy problems right now. I think that same thing applies of like, you know, downtown has some amount of logic to its naming, uh, you know, there, everywhere in the city has some amount of logic to its naming, has some amount of a historical reason that everything around it is named. So that's the reason why I would say we go back for everything. Definitely get what you're saying about the stopgap and whatnot, but I would say that that applies to anything that we don't move forward. So I, I think it just makes more sense, rather than having like, it was like a thumb drop lane in downtown, which I just, was a, oh, oh, I got sure that's a place in other places. That was just, that one caught me off guard and I regret it. Um, but that, that's why I wanna go back and, and just see, like, you know, let's, let's contextualize things better. We also are in the middle of pandemic and the, and the city staff is doing quite a bit of work, and if we have, if we have names that are fine, let's go, right? You know, we can listen to, to our community members and our neighbors, uh, but if, if the majority of the names are good, let's do it. So, I hear what you're saying, Counselor Martin, no disrespect, I just, it's been over a year, and let's go, let's move this, and, and take care of the issues where we need to, but otherwise, go.
I would agree with you, I mean, it's almost like doing a cook stuff at the end of that. It, it's almost like too many cooks in the kitchen, you know, we're never gonna get everybody to agree on these names, and, uh, one set of names is about as good as the others, I just really frankly, uh, but we do have, I think, a significant need with regards to some of these, to get this thing done. I would be opposed to sending the whole project back and rework. I just think that's a bad idea. And then, sort of responsive to, uh, you, Anthony, my only concern about this is that, once we name the alley, then the addressing issue goes away from our control. And sure, we have, you know, we have a very good relationship obviously with our administration, but it doesn't necessarily, they may not agree with us. And so I won't, I would like to isolate those particular questions and deal with them separately, the rest of the project.
Thanks for clarification, but fire still does, right? And, and that, you know, they're responding with EMT, right? Services, am I correct to you?
Counselor Pace, that's, that's correct, yeah. Our platform we're using for free plane money happened to have mapping capability that we could quickly hang out in case of, so, yes, we, we have had that for quite some time, and still do.
Thanks, thanks. And thanks, Anthony, for, for the clarification.
I wanna make sure everybody's had their opportunities to, to speak.
I'll jump in real quick. Uh, you know, I agree, uh, primarily, I think with what Beech and Rick said, I think we removed the five addresses, uh, of Autumn Creek, and we removed the historical neighborhoods of Arbor Roses and Arrenco, and have staff work with those neighborhoods to come back with maybe more suitable options. Uh, the rest of it really hasn't been contested, we've had several public hearings, I think we can move forward with that, um, tonight, and just amend the rest of the situation. I, I, so I, I do wanna say, go ahead, still sorry.
Oh, please.
So I do wanna say, it, it sounds like I am decreasing the outreach, so that's why I wanna make sure, I, I get this. Um, I really appreciate the, the stopgap clarification, that, that is good. Um, what I will say about the, the people identifying, like, we've had folks come and talk to us, yeah, we've had folks come and talk to us, we've also had every single one of those folks tell us that there hasn't been enough time for communication. So they're all saying that we've had enough communication, and that, like, enough people, I, I, I just don't think that's true. Um, and, and that's like valid, I hear you, we have had a lot of people email, like, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not diminishing that, but I am saying, in addition to those emails, everyone has pointed out that there hasn't been enough time to talk. So I'm sure there are people around the city who don't agree with where the names are, you know? Um, I, based on what I'm hearing from you all, um, uh, nevermind, I'll, I'll get back to it. You go.
Yeah, don't include me in that, because I feel what you feel, Anthony. I agree with Rick with what your idea has to say, but I, but I do think, um, it's worthwhile taking some time to do this right. Those are stuff.
Chris, um, could you, um, I know we have the legal, uh, commu-, you know, the, the communications and the outreach that are guided, um, you know, by, by statute, could you just remind me again how much time, um, the public was given, uh, you know, uh, I guess maybe when the first notification went out, uh, you know, 'cause that will help me, you know, just remember, you know, the, the window for, for communication.
Sure, Mayor, so the public notice for the alley naming project was mailed out to the four thousand plus affected property owners on October twenty seventh of two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Say that again, Chris, that, the initial?
The public notice for the, the, these here means, uh, was mailed out on October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty, to the four thousand, uh, plus affected property owners.
And, and postcard, letter?
It was a nine-page mailer, uh, so the school district's print shop helped, uh, helped us get it out, so it was just a folded nine-page mailer that was addressed directly to the property owners.
Okay, so not, uh, not too likely that it would be mixed up with, you know, campaign literature, uh, you know, and mailers that were hit the mailbox at the same time? So.
Yeah, it, it would have stood out, uh, in its, in its thickness, and it came from the city of Hillsborough on our letterhead.
Thank you. So, um, thank you, thank you all, um, you know, and, and honestly, the, you know, very good thorough discussion, and, uh, you know, I think most of, uh, the things that I've been, you know, thank you for feeling, have been addressed, uh, and, uh, no, no pun intended. Uh, so, I think with that, you know, I'm open to, uh, you know, receiving emotion, uh, you know, we've heard, we've heard several different ideas, everything from, you know, doing part of it, uh, you know, with those, uh, you know, tho- those addresses that have, uh, you know, not received, I guess, pushed back and, to be the majority, and then, you know, removing the, the five alleys, for those being in Autumn Creek, and then, you know, our store district, the Burke Townsite, as well as Arbor Roses area, um, so, basically, you know, kind of doing that, we've also heard table the whole thing. Uh, so, you know, the, the one we have not heard is that's adopted as is, so, um, we know that that's, you know, off, in, in my mind, that's off table, but I'm happy to, to hear emotion, yeah.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, 'cause I know we keep talking about taking off, uh, the, the difference between the administrative issue of addressing and the alley name? I know we talked about that a couple times. If we were to include a resolution, don't name these folks on their alley, wouldn't that be just as administratively binding? Uh, like, i- isn't that something we could do, uh, Robbie or Chris?
Uh, well, I think you could, I would, I would, I would probably cautiously guess it though, only because there may be, you may be inadvertently, um, limiting us to a really critical address change, right? Without knowing it, we just, we haven't done that, that research yet, uh, that, that's all in the implementation phase, so if the council told us that now, it may kind of bind our hands as far as actually, um, being able to make a really critical change that everybody agrees on, we just can't do it because it's included in the resolution, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. Um, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Counselor Pace?
Okay, here we go, guys. And, and gals, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the majority of the names, except for the five alleys, one in Autumn Creek, one in Arrenco. Excluding the naming issues with Arbor Roses and Arrenco, and the address with, address stuff with Stonewater. Second.
Okay, is there any, any discussion? Are there any questions?
When you say address stuff with Stonewater?
Yeah, sorry.
I, I, I think.
I was doing.
You were, you were fine to tell that. But, but, some of those, some of those issues were, um, garage doors being, you know, the primary address, uh, and, um, and having the, the front door on, um, on a common courtyard, yeah, uh, so, how would that be handled, with this kind of resolution, and, and this kind of motion?
Yeah, because there are gonna be some cases where they have to, that, that they might have to use the, the alley, right? I don't, I don't know for sure, but I would imagine, right, but when possible to use the courtyard. So, I, I don't wanna put city staff in a position that they can't move forward in, because I imagine there might be some cases where they are.
But take, but take all of Stonewater out, is that what you're suggesting?
I don't wanna say out, I just wanna say, you know, we're gonna name those alleys, those alleys need to be named, but when possible to keep the address on the courtyard. That, that seems to be different from what, like, Fred and Kyle were, and what you were saying earlier, because the, or, or, right? Your look made me think that I wasn't right, so I'm. But don't ever pay attention to my look, yeah. Um, and it's, I mean, Robbie, it sounds like the, the Stonewater address thing will be addressed, is that correct?
Um, so, yeah, if, if the Stonewater alleys are named, then, yes, yeah, the next step would be working with the Stonewater neighborhood on the addressing. And Counselor Alcare was correct, that that becomes administrative. However, I would say, that, uh, and going back to what we mentioned earlier, uh, we could do some kind of a work session when we get to that point, and, and, uh, and obviously have a council input on that, I, I know that is administrative, we, we don't do this, but if that makes the council, um, you know, a little more ease about the addressing specifically, we can, we can come back and discuss that, um. I think the other option, and I'm looking at Chris, I know Chris has something to say as well, 'cause I, I, I do wanna make sure that the motion, you know, is, is, will work okay for, for planning. But I would also maybe suggest, we could just take, add Stonewater in the script that we're taking out, right? And so maybe we don't name Stonewater yet either for different reasons, uh, don't plan on necessarily changing the names, but if, you know, we can still, um, visit with them about addressing and before they actually get named, just another option. Chris, did you have something you were gonna add to that?
Well, first, first of all, if I could, anytime the city attorney activates the video camera, I know that there are procedural issues or clarification that I really wanna get out there, um, in a proactive, uh, I, I guess in a proactive timing, so that we're not having to undo anything, so. With that, Chris, thank you for your forbearance, put that on my ass, Chad Jacobs, go ahead and speak.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're very cognizant of what's going on, I appreciate that. Um, I just wanna point out that we have specific language in the charter that says that anytime a substantive amendment to a resolution is made, it must be read aloud or made available to the public before the council adopts the resolution at that meeting. And so I would say that the amendments that we're making tonight are substantive in nature, and that's just what we need to do, if you look at the resolution, it goes through at this, the specific alleys and the names that are going to, uh, occur under the resolution. And really what we need to do is call out those specific ones that we're pulling out and delete those from the draft resolution. So it's a bit of a, a, a longer process than just making the motion that Counselor Pace made in order to comply with the charter. And so I'm not sure if it makes sense to maybe take a break on this item, allow Chris and staff to go through and make those amendments, bring it back to you tonight, or if it makes sense to put those over until the meeting to be eighteen. I know you've got some more items on the agenda tonight, so maybe there's time for staff to do that, but we need to sort of follow the procedural issues that exist in the charter before you adopt the resolution tonight.
They have, Chad, they have, we have the motion as second, is there any procedural, you know, that they have to go through, so after we draw the motion, or maybe just?
No, we can, you can follow that, if this is a motion that you wanna, if, if there's a general consensus through the discussion, that this is a motion that you all would like to adopt tonight, you can postpone this matter, you can have a, a secondary motion right now, table this matter till later in the meeting. Staff can go back and work out that information and then bring it back to you consistent motion that's made, if that makes sense.
So, two things, and thank you, Chad, that, I am really glad you activated your camera, um, this, uh, that was very helpful. So, a couple of things, first of all, for staff, do you feel like if we moved on to other agenda items, that you would be able to go through and identify the alleys, or, or, you know, the, the changes, the proposed changes, um, and remove them? Because I would hate for us to adopt a resolution and then discover afterwards that there were some, uh, you know, some alleys included that we would have intended, you know, to, to pull, okay? So I don't wanna, I don't wanna make an error in haste, um, I'm also sensitive to the fact that we've got folks who, you know, are now, uh, it's almost nine, so, you know, the staff are almost three hours, um, you know, plus last meeting, um, and, you know, and I hate to drag this on and on, but, um, you know, to make sure that we have, to, to make sure that we're right, is the right thing to do. And, um, and if that meant that, you know, we, um, stopped it here, and then in the next agenda, uh, and materials went out, you know, those alleys that are being removed, you know, would be. you know, those alleys that are being removed, you know, would be clearly identified, that way there would be, uh, time, you know, if there was any concern or input, you know, from the public, as to maybe something we missed. That would give them that opportunity, because we, we, they would lose that opportunity if we, you know, just go through tonight, remove, remove them. Again, just wanting to make sure, we've measured twice what happens. So Chris, do you think you could go through in a relatively short period of time, and accurately identify all of those, or, does it make more sense to just kind of, um, work on this over the next week or two?
So, uh, Mayor, we are prepared, if you would direct us to hit pause on the item right now, uh, the four of us that have been part of the staff presentation, uh, Chief Downey, Lieutenant Lawson, Danielle and myself, can connect, um, get you that list this evening. Um, if the council's pleasure is to have us come back with a revised resolution in your next meeting, uh, we can also do that. The clarity that I would respectfully ask for, um, is, is one specifically the neighborhoods if we are moving, if we are including the Autumn Creek neighborhood, the Arrenco Townsite in its entirety, Arbor Roses in its entirety, and Stonewater in its entirety. And if, in addition to confirming those specific neighborhoods, also ask for clarity on the removal and when we would be asked to bring those back. If, if, you know, it seems like with the Arrenco Townsite, Arbor Roses, those are issues related to the names that were chosen. Uh, for Stonewater is more of the addressing, uh, component, where Autumn Creek also addressing, but asking for removal because they've already been impacted by CHAPs. There are nuances, um, among those four different communities. We would respectfully ask for clarity on what the next steps would be for all four of those neighborhoods.
Uh, my intention, uh, was about Autumn Creek, Arbor Roses and Arrenco. On the naming, Stonewater alleys, my, my intention was that the alley needs to be named. I was more concerned about the addresses, which I think is fine, so.
I, I agree.
Yeah, so, for clarity, my motion wanted, I, I intended to include Autumn Creek, Arrenco and Arbor Roses. That's it.
And if I can't.
Looking for a timeframe on the Autumn Creek, we're looking for a timeframe on the Autumn Creek readdressing at some future date, is that what you're, is that the clarification you need, Chris, in one of them?
Yes, for Autumn Creek, if, if the council's, uh, direction to staff would be that we do bring Autumn Creek back at some point, what the timeframe you all would be comfortable with there, or you would seek a recommendation from staff. And then with Arrenco, just to be a little bit more specific, is it the Arrenco Townsite or the Arrenco Conservation District? Because, uh, the area north of Cornell is also referred to as Arrenco in its general, uh, form. And we're talking about the, the historic component in Arrenco. And then also, when we say historic, we're not talking about downtown.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're talking about Arrenco Townsite myself, excluding the area to the north. Uh, as far as the Hidden Creek, these are mine, but I would say two or three years moratorium, uh, at minimum. Uh, and, um, and Arbor Rose is pretty clear, right, about what we're talking about there?
Exactly.
So that's a, that's a distinct HOA, isn't it?
I'd agree with Chris, just.
I, uh, I, if this was a resolution, oh, Steve, you're muted.
Thank you, Anthony. Let me jump in here and close the public hearing. I, I forgot that I have not yet done that, so. I'm gonna go ahead with that, close the public hearing, we'll continue with our discussion.
I'll turn it back over to Councilor Martin.
So, I only wanted to bring up, if this is in a resolution, I would support, uh, so, just that, I, I mean, I get the consensus, I can bring it up before. Uh, but, um, just to, to say that, you know, this, this discussion about which names shouldn't, shouldn't be included, should hopefully illuminate about why we should go back and look at all of this. You know, like, the amount of time we just talked about, this was twenty minutes. Uh, Steve, uh, in different contexts, you said we wanna make sure we have the time to do this right. Uh, and I'm not using your words against you, 'cause you're not the one doing the motion, but just to a- add, add further, fur- further evidence to me saying, I, I think we need to go back and do this, right? And I, I just don't think the names that are chosen right now, um, are, are, are the, are the right place. And I say all that just to provide my piece, I hope that didn't sound bitter, uh, because, you know, this is a good input here. I just wanted to provide an additional clarification of, like, I think this shows that we should. May I ask, um, uh, Mayor, if I could ask Councilor Martin, and I think Councilor Alker as well, 'cause I've, I've heard similar comments from her. I just, if, if you could clarify, um, what you mean by, by if we were to take more time, what would be the expectation? I think that's what, what I'm missing is, what, what the, what your expectation would be that staff would do if we were to hold on for now.
This is Councilor Alker. I wanna be sure that, that we are, uh, including and excluding all the alleys that need to be considered. I'd hate to decide something tonight and find out, well, hey, we forgot about such and such alley, or in this part of the city. Um, I, I, I feel like we need to know that. We would need to responsibly need to know that. So that's all I'm gonna say, and the way that we would need to know that is if we could take some more time.
Thank you, Councilor Alker, and if I could, maybe look to Chris, I believe that we actually have a, a strong, um, we, we believe that we do, that these one, two one alleys are, are, um, inclusive of everything that would need to be named. So I do think we know that, Chris, did you, could you confirm that, or am I off on that?
Um, we, um, have identified a couple of additional alleys, uh, that were missed. Uh, and, uh, there's a variety of reasons for that, but it's a pretty small group. It's about the realities that would need to come at a later date. Um, so, you know, we could weave those into, you know, the, the future, um, motions, depending on where the direction was given.
It, it, it sounds like we need to table this and come back with more, uh, if you have enough input about, about the direction of the council. And, and, and look at this again, probably in the next meeting, um, is that, 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 what other people think?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because, Chris, I heard you say that you and Chief Lieutenant and, and Ms. Homer could meet and identify those alleys, um, if we were gone, and then if we came back to it, you know, we could, you know, um, basically deal with the resolution, uh, tonight. But if the will of council is not to do that, then, again, then we won't, um.
Mayor, if I could make a recommendation here, I, I, so, um, I don't know that, doing it tonight, I, I actually hear your counsel very helpful. There's a few other addresses that potentially need to be included, that I'd like to meet with staff to talk about that and bring this back to the council. Uh, so if we can do that, I think we have good direction.